Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. The December 3, 2025 meeting of the City Council will now come to order at 6:00 PM. Winnie, may we have roll call, please?
Jessica Ayers.
Here.
Nick Card.
Here.
Kevin Keating.
Here.
Mike Kurlinger.
Yep.
John Quinn.
Here.
Zach Smith.
Here.
Kevin Stein.
Here.
And Garrett West. We have seven present.
Thank you. We have a quorum. City manager reports. Mr. Vile?
Mayor and council John Vile, your interim city manager. I'm back. So, thank you for the opportunity. I look forward to working with you and completing the work of the citizens and taking care of our great residents. So, thank you for that. Just a quick short report on a few key items to update you on. First of all, Fire Station 15 is going well. The structural framing is going up and the project is actually ahead of schedule a bit and completion is expected in November 16. Sam Barnum has continued to lead that project and it's going well and we're grateful for his efforts and looking forward to getting that done and getting those folks housed and that. We have concluded the public participation part of the Main Street project and we had an open house that was attended by well over 70 people and over 4,000 online surveys have been completed. Next week, we're going to meet with council in a study session to review the results of this and to seek any further guidance that you need to make a final decision on this, which will occur in January. So, many thanks to our communication staff and especially to public work staff who just have gone out of their way to try to collect input and get feedback from our citizens on this project. Open enrollment is something that we do in the city when staff need to re-up their insurance and it's always a challenging exercise because we have over 530 people that have to renew their desires for insurance and medical coverage and dental and everything. Bonnie and her staff and HR have conducted over 20 different enrollment meetings with staff to help them understand it. They had a comprehensive benefit guide and they answered dozens and dozens of phone calls regarding this issue and they have really gone above and beyond in taking care of our staff and ensuring that they have the information they need to fill out these forms. So, I just wanted to acknowledge Bonnie and her staff and the great work they did in the open enrollment period. And lastly, this Saturday is with the Winter Lights Festival and just remind you again that it's Saturday, starts at 5:00, goes until 7:00. It's a nice family event that has all kinds of things associated with it, entertainment, Santa lights, some games, candy cane hunts, the whole nine yards. Our mayor will be doing a countdown to turn on the Christmas tree and that'll be followed by some fireworks and look forward to seeing that fun event and I hope that many can make it. And so, with that, that is our report for this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Vile. Let's move on to oral requests and communications from the audience. This is when the City Council sets aside 30 minutes for in-person public comments. Comments are limited to two minutes per person or organization. As outlined in the agenda, the public may also submit written comments to the council. However, there were no written comments received for tonight's meeting. Before hearing public comments, I'd like to note the decorum policy for the council chambers. The use of noise makers or disruptive audience behavior such as applause, cheering, or shouting is not permitted. Decorum violations are time-consuming and disrespectful to the speaker and all attendees. Failure to follow the basic standards of decorum may result in removal from the meeting. Finally, I would like to emphasize this is your opportunity to provide comments to the council. It is not intended to be a time for questions and answers. If you have completed a public comment form, please come to the front of the room when your name is called. The time is 6:04. Winnie, I believe we have remote comments to start?
Yes, we do. They should.
So, for those commenting remotely, please state your name for the record prior to speaking.
It looks like just one of the people is here. Dom Meriwether.
Dominic Meriwether with the Executive Record of Prowl Ground. I'm just listening in tonight. Sorry about the confusion.
All right. Is there anyone else to testify remotely?
There were supposed to be two people, but I only see one. And then we had one person with a slip, Annie Jenkins.
Okay. Annie?
Good evening. I'm just here tonight just to share. We've got the lights up downtown. It's completely lit up. Vogel Plaza looks amazing. We were able to add some extra lights this year to Vogel Plaza due to some extra additional dollars received through our foundation. So, hopefully we all get a chance to go by and look. Also, don't forget, Third Friday is coming up in two weeks and then also we have a social next Thursday night at the new restaurant downtown called Champagne Cafe on the quarter of Bartlett and Main. So, would like to see as many there as you can and thank you very much for all you guys do and thank you for the support we get from you.
All right. Thank you.
Thanks.
I know we have another person that filled out. Did you fill out a card? Did you?
Yeah.
Okay. So, one more?
They're for the public hearing for 90.1.
Okay. That would be continued, sir.
And so, how I like to handle that procedurally, just so we get it on the land use record, is we can have her testify when we get to 90.1. We can open the public hearing, receive her testimony, then move to continue. If council wanted to take that item out of order, I would not object to that, but that's ultimately your call.
Okay. Sounds good. Do we have anyone else that wants to testify tonight? Or, okay. Do we have anybody up remote yet? Okay. Well, that being said, let's move on to approval or correction of the November 19, 2025 minutes. We've all gotten those minutes. Are there any corrections? Is there a voice from above that has any corrections?
No, we're Garrett.
All right. Minutes will stand as submitted. So, we'll move on to consent calendar. There are two items on the consent calendar tonight. Mr. Mitten?
Thank you, Your Honor. Item 60.1 is Council Bill 2025-97, An Ordnance Rotifying the Employment Resignation Agreement and Release of Robert Field. And item 60.2 is Council Bill 2025-98, Resolution Outlining the Intention to Appoint the Next City Manager in the Path Forward to Do So.
Great. Thank you. I will adjourn the motion. Mr. Stein?
I move to approve the consent calendar.
Second.
All right. Items to be removed. All right. Seeing none. Winnie, can we have roll call, please?
Kevin Stein.
Yes.
Nick Card.
Yes.
Jessica Ayers.
Yes.
Kevin Keating.
Yes.
John Quinn.
Yes.
Zach Smith.
Yes.
Kevin Stein.
Didn't hard to say yes?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't mark you. Mike Kurlinger?
Yes.
And we have seven yes.
Now, do I get two? After every 10 years, you get a second. Sorry. I'm just looking ahead here. Here's what I'm thinking. I think we'll just take things in order as they're presented. This should go fast enough. So, that being said, ordinances and resolution to ordinances for consideration tonight. Mr. Mitten?
Thank you, Your Honor. Item 80.1 is Council Bill 2025-99, A Resolution Delegating to the City Manager Pro Tem Authority to Make Hiring and Firing Decisions Outside of Department Directors and Deputy Department Directors.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mitten. Anyone like a staff report or a motion? Mr. Card?
Staff report.
Okay.
Mayor and council Eric Mitten, your city attorney. Under our city charter, an interim city manager, or as they call it in the charter, city manager pro tem, has all the authorities of a normal permanent city manager with the exception that they cannot make final hiring and firing decisions without approval from council. Without any sort of council action, what this could look like is every single routine hiring or termination would require council action. That would add weeks to the process as we're trying to hire public works laborers, lifeguards for rogue X, et cetera. And so, in the past, how we have handled this, particularly during the interim period before Brian Shotun was city manager, is council did a blanket delegation of hiring and firing decisions for positions up to department directors and deputy department directors. That allowed departments to make routine processes. If someone is just, didn't show up to work for a week straight, we can take action on that instead of waiting for a council agenda, et cetera. Or if they just, if we just need to hire someone for a routine rank and file position, we're not bringing all of those to council, delaying hiring, which can even make some applicants leave because they need a job right then. But then what it also does is it allows council to have some degree of input in high-level positions. Not that the interim doesn't have good judgment, but simply the interim, any interim under our charter is here for less than a year. Council is not. Some of council is here for much longer than a year. So, what this allows us to do is give some continuity with those high-level leadership positions. And so, how this would work in practice is we would still work a recruitment in the normal way we do at the staff level. We wouldn't need council doing interviews, et cetera. But instead of then the city manager just making a hiring decision for a department head, we would hold an executive session, have a recommendation, brief you on the finalists and the recommendation, and then get some direction on whether to bring that and formally approve it on the dais. We do have a couple retirements of department heads coming up in the routine course, so this isn't a hypothetical, but this is how that process would work in practice if this resolution is adopted.
Thank you. Questions? Motion? Mr. Card?
I move to approve Council Bill 2025-99.
All right. A second from Mr. Keating. Any discussion? Winnie, will you call roll?
Nick Card.
Yes.
Kevin Keating.
Yes.
John Quinn.
Yes.
Zach Smith.
Yes.
Jessica Ayers.
Yes.
Mike Kurlinger.
Yes.
And Kevin Stein.
Yes.
We have seven yes?
All right. That passes. 80.2.
80.2 is Council Bill 2025-100, An Ordnance Authorizing Execution of an Intergovernmental Agreement and Acceptance of a Neighborhood Stabilization Program One Funding in the Amount of $766,106.67 from Oregon Housing and Community Services to address the impacts of the national foreclosure crisis.
Right. Anyone need a staff report? Motion? Mr. Stein. Sorry.
I move to approve Council Bill 2025-TAC-100.
Second.
All right. Moved and seconded. Yes. Discussion by Mr. Kurlinger.
Yeah, just to clarify, we've discussed these funds previously, if I recall, and they're made available to a specific project. If we fail to utilize all the funds, there's no ramifications for us, correct?
And I see Director King coming up.
Good evening, council. No, there's no ramification to the city. There's no penalty. If a project is not identified, we would either go out and do a competitive process or if that still failed, we would return the funds to OHCS.
Other questions? Winnie, will you call roll?
Kevin Stein.
Yes.
Nick Card.
Yes.
Jessica Ayers.
Yes.
Zach Smith.
Yes.
Mike Kurlinger.
Yes.
Kevin Keating.
Yes.
And John Quinn.
Yes.
We have seven yes?
All right. That motion carries as well. Public hearings, agenda item 90. Now, before the public hearings, I'd like to remind everyone that the rules of decorum previously outlined are still applicable. Violation of the decorum policy may result in removal from the chambers. Comments for administrative or legislative hearings are limited to four minutes per individual, group, or organization. Comments for quasi-judicial hearings are limited to a total of 30 minutes for applicants and/or their representatives. Five-minute rebuttal time may be requested. Appellants and/or the representatives are limited to a total of 30 minutes and if the applicant is not the appellant, they will also be allowed for a total of 30 minutes. All their participants will be limited to four minutes. Quasi-judicial hearings have specific requirements which City Attorney Eric Mitten will outline before the hearing. Do we have any quasi-judicial tonight?
Yes. 90.1 is quasi-judicial. So, and because we do have someone to testify, you get to hear me read the rules.
All right.
All right. 90.1 is a request for continuance. Council's request to consider the continuance of a public hearing related to a transportation facility application to upgrade Stevens Street from Crater Lake Avenue to approximately 250 feet north on Wabash Avenue. While this is a continuance request, we do have someone here who'd like to speak tonight. So, we'll have, it looks like, a brief staff report, then we'll open the public hearing to get that person's testimony into the land use record before having a motion to continue on the item. And we do have a few rules to go over. I'm going to explain the rules that govern this hearing. Before the hearing begins, city staff will give a report. The report will list the criteria that governs the city's decision. After the staff report, the hearing will be opened for other speakers. The applicant will speak first and may ask for rebuttal time. Following the applicant, any other interested person will be allowed to speak. Before the hearing is closed, anyone who needs more time to present evidence must ask for more time. If you ask, the hearing will be continued or the record will be kept open and you'll have at least seven days to present additional written evidence. Any testimony, argument, or evidence you give must relate to the criteria listed in the staff report or other criteria in the comprehensive plan of land use regulations that you believe apply to the decision. If you fail to raise an issue or do not give the council sufficient information so that the council and any party can respond, you will not be able to repeal that issue to the Land Use Board of Appeals. If you do not raise constitutional or other issues about any proposed condition with specificity so that the council can respond to that issue, you will not be able to bring a court action for damages. Thank you.
And since this will be a continuance request, do we need maybe just background on the continuance request, but certainly not of, I don't think, a full staff report?
Good evening, Mayor and council Carla Palladino with your planning department. So, yes, this request this evening is to continue to February 4th. It's a little bit of a modification to what is in the agenda item commentary. And in terms of just the project itself, so engineering and planning have been working on a transportation facility project on Stevens Street. The extent, as City Attorney Mitten had mentioned, is from Crater Lake to just north of Wabash. It also includes a portion of potentially Oregon Terrace as well as potentially Pearl Street. The application did go to the Planning Commission. There was lots of testimony. We kind of went back to the drawing board and are looking at alternatives. And so, the upgrades to the street would include things like sidewalks, bike lanes, on-street parking, streetlights, things like that. So, as I mentioned, we did have a first hearing with the Planning Commission on November 13th. We are requesting, we have, we're continuing to December 11th. We are going to be requesting another continuance to January to provide additional time to just kind of lay out the alternatives, make sure that our staff report has all of the questions answered from the public and those kind of things. And then just in terms of some of the concerns that we've heard, looking at the turn lane at Crater Lake Avenue, so that kind of left turn pocket there, the needs for the Oregon Terrace extension, the width of the street, impact to properties in terms of landscaping and parking and just adjacency to the residences themselves, requirements for bike lanes, and then parking concerns were some of the things that we've heard. So, again, we're trying to address all of those things. We need a little bit more time to do that and so, we would like to move this hearing.
Okay. Questions for staff before we open the public hearing, if any? Real quick, we got that background, which isn't much, but still a request for ex parte contact is in order for this, correct?
Yeah, we should still have, just to ask if anyone's had ex parte contact on the matter.
Does anyone have any ex parte contact to disclose on this matter? All right. Seeing none, we will go ahead and open the public hearing to gather the testimony that we have tonight. So, public hearing is now open. And?
Good evening. My name is Liz Hardy and I live on Wabash Street and I'm here because I really would appreciate if you guys consider building the sidewalk on Stevens and continuing to Wabash. I've been living in the house for about 15 years now and it's been really hard to be able to walk from Wabash to Crater Lake Avenue. Every time I have to walk, I have to go and cross side by side just when there is like a place where I can walk. My mom is 83 years old and she's still working and sometimes she has to take the bus and she has to walk all the way to Crater Lake Avenue from Wabash and I'm always worried about her like being okay. There's not a place where she can walk. I have had my kids on Roosevelt Elementary School and I had to walk on Wabash and I've seen lots of kids walking on that street without sidewalks. I always felt that was very dangerous, especially now that we have bigger trucks every year. So, it would be really wonderful if you guys really put a sidewalk on both sides. I also heard that some people just want it on one side, but I don't think it's fair that we have to cross the street just to be safe. So, it should be probably be on both sides. It will benefit a lot of us that we live in that area that we want to walk. And sometimes we don't have a car or maybe our car is not working. Like for me, right now, my car is not working. So, anyway, so I would appreciate if you guys really considered putting a sidewalk on both sides of Stevens and Wabash. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else here who might want to testify that can't come back? Okay. All right. Do we have a, do we have testimony here?
Do you want to speak? I think?
No, I think he's okay. He said he just agrees with what she said.
All right. Well, that doesn't go on the record, unfortunately. You got to come up here. All right. So, that being said, no one else to testify officially. I'll take a motion for a continuance to what day? There you go.
I move to approve the continuance request for TF 25263 to February 4, 2026.
Second.
All right. Motion and second. Any discussion? Seeing none. Roll call, please.
Nick Card.
Yes.
Jessica Ayers.
Yes.
Mike Kurlinger.
Yes.
Kevin Stein.
Yes.
Garrett West.
Yes.
Zach Smith.
Yes.
John Quinn.
Yes.
And Kevin Keating.
Yes.
We have eight yes?
All right. That is continued till February 4th. 90.2, sir.
Thank you, Your Honor. Item 90.2 is Council Bill 2025-101, An Ordnance Amending Sections 10.550 of the Medford Municipal Code as it pertains to access standards. And this is land use legislative.
All right. Access standard code amendment. Staff report, please.
Thank you. Good evening, Carla Palladino with your planning department. I also have Carl McNair, our transportation manager, in the audience in case there's any tough questions that he can help me with. So, this evening, we're looking at changing Chapter 10 to amend provisions related to driveway standards and cross-access easements. The authorizing criteria this evening are found in our development code, Section 10.218. There are five criteria that have, that staff has addressed in the council report. We find that four of those are satisfied and one to be not applicable this evening. This also is a type IV legislative amendment. The Planning Commission has reviewed the amendment and made a favorable recommendation to you this evening. In terms of background, the city did adopt the Transportation System Plan in 2018 and as part of that, there are some guiding policies and kind of code amendment changes that are noted in that document. The specific one that we're looking at this evening is to evaluate the number of permitted driveways, driveway consolidation standards, and cross-access easement requirements. Our engineering department does hold quarterly meetings with local developers, engineers, and planners to talk about just development issues and looking at code standards. And this was a topic, well, that was it. Thank you.
All right. Thanks so much for that. Any questions for staff?
So, in terms of just looking at code changes, so this was a topic that was brought up regarding access, driveway access on collector streets. In the fall of 2024, engineering and planning met with a subgroup to discuss code revisions that are before you this evening. So, I'll go through kind of what these code changes look like. So, in terms of the driveway spacing locational standards, the existing regulations really are pretty, not very specific, I guess, is the question. They only have one section that addresses both arterial and collector driveway standards. Everything's kind of mushed together. And there is limited guidance on cross-access easement. So, this amendment really provides looking at separating the sections for arterial streets and our collector streets. And then on collector streets, going even further and saying, hey, we want to look at standards when the zoning is commercial, industrial, multifamily versus single-family. And then?
Can I pause you right?
Oh, sure.
Winnie, is there any way to shut off the timer before I have a seizure?
You just put one more minute on the clock.
Or give her four minutes. I don't care.
Give her four minutes and I have to be done. Go really fast.
Oh, there we go. Sorry.
Perfect. Okay. So, and then in terms of cross-access easements, again, this is really providing more detail, looking at the street classifications and the uses being proposed. So, going through a little bit more detail, looking at the arterial street, driveway access requirements. So, no driveway access is permitted if the parcel abuts a lower-order street or if there's legal access to abutting parcel. The driveway can be no closer than 250 feet to the intersection or farthest from the intersection. And then driveways placed adjacent to contiguous parcels require? And then driveways placed adjacent to contiguous parcels require, and easements for shared driveways, let's see, it doesn't make any sense. Driveways placed adjacent to contiguous parcels, so if there's two adjacent and it's next to that intersection, we want to be as close to the other parcel, and then from there, we would require cross-access easement. In terms of the collector street, industrial, commercial, multifamily, again, the driveway, no driveway if the parcel abuts a lower-order street. So if the property is on a collector street, but they also have frontage on a lower-order street, we would require that that access, driveway access, be taken from the lower-order street unless the spacing is 1.5 times the minimum standard, which is, there's a chart in the code that talks about what that spacing is. And then in, for collector streets, the standard is no closer than 150 feet to the intersection. So if you're at an intersection, we make sure you're farther than 150 feet or farthest from the intersection as possible. And then again, same regarding the driveway placement adjacent to contiguous parcels. Again, making sure that we provide for that allowance for cross-access when necessary. And then in terms of collector streets regarding single-family residential zoning, again, no driveway serving a single parcel if the parcel abuts a lower-order street unless the spacing standards are met. So again, if they go back to that table and they can meet that standard, then they would be permitted. In this case, no closer than 150 feet to the intersection or farthest from the intersection as possible. And then if that's the case, then no larger driveway would be granted. So if they needed something a little bit larger, it would have to just meet the standard. And then, and for this one as well, for shared driveways on collector streets that have 30 mile per hour or less speed limit, they're permitted at half the minimum spacing standard. This meets the, and it meets the standards for the zone and maneuvering for head-out direction. So if there are parcels or lots created off a collector street for a single-family subdivision, we want to make sure that people are able to pull into their driveway to turn around on their property and be able to head out on their driveway onto that street. And then in terms of the cross-access easement standards, again, we kind of separated out the different collector, major collector and minor collector, as well as industrial developments. So for major collectors, when the driveway is granted, we would provide cross-access to contiguous parcels planned for similarly uses and for when it does not abut a lower-order street. And then in this case, SFR, the single-family residential, would be exempt from the standard. For minor collector, again, when the driveway is granted on the minor collector, provide cross-access again to contiguous parcels that do not abut a lower-order street, and then the standard is, would be exempt for SFR zone properties. And then for industrial developments, when all other standards are met, such as block length and perimeter block length and driveway standards, they're exempt from cross-access easement requirements. So sometimes industrial properties are larger, they may have things that need to be fenced, and so in those cases, you know, we would not require cross-access across the properties. So this did go to the Planning Commission Active Transportation Advisory Committee in August of this year, and also went to council briefing in October. In terms of agency and public comment, we did have comments from our Public Fire Department, or, excuse me, Medford Fire Department, and there is a standard there in bold italics that has been added to the code language as part of their request. We had no public testimony during the Planning Commission hearing, and other agencies provided no additional comments. Planning Commission did hold hearings on October 23rd and November 13th. They did recommend, favorably to recommend adoption of this, 8-0. And with that, we would ask council to approve the ordinance as submitted. Thank you. Be happy to take any questions.
Yeah. What, questions for staff?
Yeah. So, pretend like 80% of that is over my head, and I wasn't memorizing the code before these amendments came to us. But based on what you were describing, it sounds like this is offering more specificity for what needs to be done, but also it's broadening the scope of options for developers or driveways when these things are going in, not further restricting it.
Yes, that's how I would categorize it.
Okay. I'll just ask, because I want to trap my head around it, the one area where I'm like, okay, I think this makes sense, probably because I used to work there, is there's the driveway at Barnes &amp; Noble off of Biddle. And what size street is that?
It's an arterial.
Okay.
So it's the highest.
So with this code, but I know you can also get in from, I think, Morrow.
You can also get in from Progress, I believe.
Uh, Progress, excuse me, yeah, Progress first. So would that driveway that gets you in to between Old Applebee's and Barnes &amp; Noble, would they not be allowed to put that driveway in with this new code language?
They would, so because it's existing, they would need to do a traffic impact study to kind of show what the impacts are, and then we would be looking at either an exception or, or something to that effect.
If someone was putting in a new, if there was a new development going on that was in similar circumstances, the way I read this is you couldn't get in from Biddle, you would have to go over to Progress because it's a contiguous parcel.
That's the lower-order street.
And am I interpreting that correctly?
Carl, Carl may be able to answer that more specifically.
Here's, I'll just, I'll just get to my thought. I'm like, it would be super weird to only be able to access that whole development by either coming in from McAndrews or Progress and having to weave through parking lots to go from Marie Callender's to Barnes &amp; Noble to Applebee's to Market of Choice to-
I was going to say bad news.
Dating yourself.
You know what I'm saying? So would there be exceptions so that that's not how that goes? Because I feel like that could potentially be detrimental. But what you're describing is actually opening up further options.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilors. Carl McNair with the Public Works Department. So the restriction on arterials has, was already in the code and that, and will remain in the code, but there's, for larger commercial developments like that where they have frontage on multiple streets, and in that case, with Barnes &amp; Noble, Biddle's a major arterial, McAndrews is a major arterial, there's a lot going on with that one. There is an option already existing in the same code that allows a developer to do a traffic impact analysis and show that basically their driveway proposal makes more sense than what our standards say as the basic requirements. But these are kind of the baseline that people have to work off of.
Okay. So there's exception, that's what you were saying about the TIA, Carlos. There's a methodology for where this doesn't make sense. Okay. Like I said, I don't have the rest of it memorized, so it's helpful to know that this restriction already exists and we already have a way to address it.
Perfect, thank you.
Other questions? Kevin?
Yeah, I was, I'm glad you said that it was less restrictive because it seemed to be more restrictive. And, and again, I'm kind of with Mike, this is a little bit over the head in some of the stuff. Anyway, I'm going to go ahead and go forward. I'm surprised that there was no negative feedback from anybody in the community, so I'm assuming that's a good sign.
And I guess I should clarify, less restrictive. I think we've, we've better clarified each of the classifications, so arterial versus collector, and then we've, you know, also identified kind of how the cross-access easement works for different types of land uses. Whereas before it was like, we've got something, you're adjacent to something else, give us a cross-access easement. Now it's more of, does this make sense? Is it residential to residential? Is it commercial to commercial? Do the industrial have maybe an exception because they're a different type of use? So I think it gives some more options.
I would, Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I would also add that the genesis of this started with a quarterly meeting that Public Works has with the development community. They expressed some concerns about these access standards. We agreed to work with them, and the result of that is they were pleased with the changes that we made. Is it everything they wanted? Probably not, but they were pleased with the direction that we're headed and they support the changes.
That's what I'm looking for. Thank you.
All right. Other questions? All right, seeing none, I will open the public hearing. At this point, anyone wishing to speak on this subject come forward as called? No one? All right. Anybody who did not fill out a comment card? All right, no more, no more chances. I will close the public hearing. I will take a motion. Mr. Card.
Move to approve Council Bill 2025-101.
Second. And second from Mr. Stein. Discussion? Okay. Seeing none. Winnie, call the roll, please.
Nick Card.
Yes.
Kevin Stein.
Yes.
Garrett West.
Yes.
Jessica Ayers.
Yes.
Kevin Keating.
Yes.
Zach Smith.
Yes.
John Quinn.
Yes.
And Mike Kurlinger.
Yes.
We have eight yes?
All right. That passes. 90.3?
Thank you, Your Honor. 90.3 is Council Bill 2025-102, enordens adding section 10.462A to the Medford Municipal Code as it pertains to transportation infrastructure and proportionate share mitigation.
You're up.
Last up, okay. Again, Carla Palladino with your planning department. So this evening, we're looking again at a legislative code amendment to Chapter 10, looking at adding provisions related to transportation mitigation associated with developments in our community. Again, the authoring criteria is out of Section 10.218. The council report has identified these, the first four criteria to be satisfied and the fifth one to be not applicable. The Planning Commission has also reviewed this code amendment and has forwarded a favorable recommendation to you this evening. And again, based on our Transportation System Plan in 2018, the list of code, key code and policy amendments does include staff looking at and the council reevaluating modifications to the code related to prorata or proportionate share requirements for traffic signals and roundabouts. Engineering staff worked closely with our Transportation Commission to develop and refine this language that's before you this evening. So what is proportionate share? This is kind of just the, kind of broad understanding of what this means. So development comes in, land use division or a zone change, they may typically be required to do a transportation impact analysis, they may impact an intersection, they are required to pay a portion of the cost for required transportation mitigation that is proportionate or equivalent to the impact of that development. So again, if there's a four-way stop and the development is going to go through that, causes an impact to that intersection, and it does not meet the level of service standard, then mitigation is required. The intersection that's planned for maybe a future signal or roundabout, but overall, the intersection does not meet the trigger for that improvement just yet, then this really provides that opportunity for someone to come in and provide their share of what that future traffic signal or roundabout would cost. So that money would be collected by the city, we would hold that into an account, and then that money would be used to, to build that improvement in the future. So summarize amendment, we've added a new section, this 10.462A. There are four kind of subsections, a purpose and scope, applicability, proportionate share calculation, and use of proportionate share funds. And I'll talk a little bit about each of those. So in terms of purpose and scope, as it, as it's noted in the title, this really supports the goal aimed at development paying its fair share of traffic impacts. We really don't have anything in our code that talks about this currently, and so this provides a mechanism to really look at when, when we're looking at developments and we're looking at rough proportionality and things that are impacting the development, this gives us kind of more tools in the toolbox to allow for engineering to provide those requirements during development. It does apply only to city jurisdiction, transportation facilities, and then it does reference the Oregon Administrative Regulations regarding land use regulations, functional code plan amendments, things like that. In terms of applicability, this really distinguishes when proportionate share can be used. So it talks about when warrants are not met. It also talks about new terms such as major mitigation and minor mitigation. Each of those has kind of types of projects that are applicable. So major mitigation would include things like relocation of existing signal poles or cabinets, right-of-way acquisition outside of the developer's control, mitigation determined by the Public Works Director as being a major mitigation. Minor mitigation would be things like sign installation, signalhead installation on existing signal poles, and new turn lanes. In terms of the proportionate share calculation, this is, you can see on the right side, that is kind of the formula. So development trips divided by the total future intersection trips times 1.5. The minimum that someone would pay would be 5%. We do round up to the nearest whole percentage point. The calculation accounts for, the 1.5% accounts for things like engineering, construction management, contingency, and cost escalation. And then the amount, the amount collected equals the percentage times the estimated cost of that improvement. And then in terms of use of proportionate share funds, the payments would be due prior to building permit issuance or final plat. Estimates are based on the city engineer or the developer engineer with city approval or actual cost of construction. So there could be a time when the improvement is put in, and we already know what the final cost is, and then that would be the cost that we would use for that percentage. Funds would be held in an interest-bearing account for the mitigation of the facility, but the interest is not reimbursable back to the developer or whoever's paid in. And then payment may be refunded to the original entity or reassigned if the entity cannot be found. This did go to the Transportation Commission over several drafts between February 2023 and October of '24. The Planning Commission did hold study sessions in February and June of this year. They also initiated the amendment in late February. Council did hear regarding this code amendment at council briefings in mid-October. In terms of public comments, we have no written public comments received. We did have draft language, was emailed to the Building Association of Southern Oregon, Builders Association of Southern Oregon, and we also did have a Mr. Harlan attend the October 23rd hearing, who spoke about the topic and assisted with the draft language as part of the Transportation Commission. We did receive one agency comment from ODOT. We did have a pretty lengthy back and forth with them. There is Exhibit D in the record that identifies that, you know, they're saying, hey, you know, this language is okay, but it doesn't seem to quite hit the mark on the regulations and the administrative rules. We kind of had a back and forth prior to the first October 23rd meeting with them. We did continue that meeting so that we could work on language. We went back and forth on that language for a little while. Staff then kind of said, this is our final, uh, final language that we would like to propose. We sent it back to ODOT, and we did not hear back from them. So they do have appeal rights if, if they wanted to take it further than council at this point, but we have not heard from them since that October 23rd, final, following that October 23rd hearing. The Planning Commission did hold, again, a hearing, formal hearing on November 13th. They voted 7 to 1 to forward favorable recommendation. And with that, we would ask you to approve the ordinance as submitted. Be happy to take any questions. Thank you.
Questions? Jessica?
So, you know, historically, we've deferred the cost of SDCs to help developers on the front end of the project. I see that that's not an option here, so what was the reasoning behind that?
Well, there was a question from our planning commissioner about trying to get a deferral, and we just, we don't have good track record with that, and so we would prefer to have it either the time of prior issuance of the building permit or at final plat, just to make sure that those funds are collected. I believe that legal staff also concurred with that just being kind of problematic.
I concur.
So why is it not problematic with SDCs?
It also may be, I don't, I don't actually know.
It is, and we, we are talking about that, and in the future, we may have a discussion with council, but it's challenging there, too.
Because at that point, we've let, we've let the permit go, we've let them start building things. At that point, they want to do their stuff, and they don't want to come back and have potentially, you know, us sending them a bill for a lot of money.
Don't give them CFO.
CFO is tough as well.
I can speak to that. So there are only certain things under the law that you can refuse to issue CFO for, and when we try and make, we'll hold back CFO, a hook for things unrelated to the building code, it becomes legally challenging sometimes to deny CFO.
Mr. Kurlinger?
If I understood the minutes from the Planning Commission meeting correctly, the one dissenting vote was kind of about some details regarding numbers or timing, wasn't with the concept. Is that a fair categorization?
It was, it was two-part. The calculation itself, the 1.5 times, he didn't, Mr. McCackney did not agree with the 1.5 times. And then there was, he also would like to have the ability to pay at the time of CFO, and so that was-
But the concept was not, the dissent wasn't for this entire concept.
No, I think it was just those fine points, from what I understand.
The way I read this is, and I think you clarified this in the, in a question I asked, was now if it shows, oh, well, we have to do this traffic mitigation because of the traffic that this development's going to cause, developer A, the first one who's doing stuff there is either forking out the entire cost of it, or things are getting delayed until we can get that done for this development to move forward. This is saying, it's dumb that developer A should have to pay for this whole intersection This is saying, it's dumb that developer A should have to pay for this whole intersection when we know that like B, C, and E are going to be here in a couple of years and they just reap all the benefits and this guy's footing the whole bill. So this is a way to spread that out, so all the development that's benefiting from these upgrades is sharing a cost of that.
Correct.
Cool.
Mr. Card?
So I do want to clarify one point that you said, Mike, which is that if the warrants are met to need to build it, it has to be built still before the development can move forward. But what it does do is mean that, like, let's say, once you get to 1,000 trips, that's when you need to build it. It's, you can't build up to 999 trips and then not build it, and then the next guy that comes in is only adding one trip, but now he's got the whole cost of the thing.
If there's currently 200 and this is going to add 200, so we don't have to do it yet, but we know in a couple of years, we're going to be at that thousand.
And so then we have money now, so when the developer who comes in with that last trip that triggers the warrant, there's a pool of money, so he's not totally high and dry and swamp the cost of his development. Because we do actually have examples of intersections that we are, like, unless we can get some big development to come through, we're going to be stuck with small developers having huge costs, and that's not a good thing for the city. So that's what this is trying to, to address. But I, I want to clarify that, because I was involved with the transportation commission as we went back and forth for well over a year on this topic. And we have mechanisms to do the other piece of it, which is like, once it gets built, we can then charge other people through these districts, not districts, what do we call them? They're overlays. Right?
Oh, like the improvement districts?
Yeah. Well, so if like, we have to build it, then we can charge other people who come in to pay into that thing.
Yeah, there's a name for it.
Yep. Anyway.
Oh, reimbursement, thank you.
Reimbursement districts, thank you. So we have that mechanism, but that doesn't solve the problem of the small developer who comes in and now has to pay out a bunch of cash. Someday later, you'll get your money back and be made whole, but you're like, I'm not going to build a million-dollar signalized intersection for a 500, you know, $500,000 development. So it's, it's solving the, the first problem, which is how can we get enough money in place to, to make it so the small guy doesn't get slammed with this big cost.
Am I, I feel like this might have been there, I might not be remembering, but is there a term? So if we anticipate that one project is going to add 200 trips, I'm making up numbers, and we think the rest is going to develop, and within the next four or five years, we will need this upgrade. But then that never happens.
Where does the money go?
Yeah. Does the money get assigned to another project, or after seven years, we call John and we go, congrats, here's your money back?
I'm going to, I'm going to phone a friend. I feel like I know the answer, but I want to make sure.
So, all right, so the way we analyze the traffic in, in all of Oregon because of the transportation planning rule is we actually have to look at future-year traffic projections when we're analyzing development impacts. So we, in that scenario you described, we know that if the area builds out in the future, that will be needed. Now, so really, the money will sit there until that additional development happens. There is no time. I guess the quick answer is there is no timeframe. Yeah.
Other questions?
So I have, I have one that just kind of came to mind through, through the discussion of this, and it's, must be somewhere in here already addressed. But what, what stuck out to me is back to the whole, we do a 20-year outlook, that's what our TSP does. And our TSP identifies a lot of intersections that have to be upgraded, and those become SDC eligible. So my, my question is, are we, are we doing it twice now, or is this going to take some kind of change to SDCs and SDC methodology? Because it feels like if someone's paying an SDC for an SDC-funded project that's in our TSP, I guess I'm not quite seeing how those, the two programs interrelate there.
I can actually answer that. Let me go. Six shots. SDCs expand capacity. And not necessarily, all these improvements are not necessarily capacity improvements, but they are required under other warrants.
So what happens when a project is on, in our TSP and funded?
That's a good question.
So TSP and funded?
It's an intersection project, yeah.
Carl, you want to help me with this one?
So generally, this was, this was set up primarily for traffic signals and roundabouts for intersection projects, which don't expand capacity. We don't give SDCs credits or collect SDCs for traffic signals. So setting those aside, things that would add capacity could be like turn lanes and things at a intersection. If those are identified in our TSP as, as a tier-one project, the developers already get to count those as funded in that future projection, because the city has said the city's going to build it at that point. So it's, it would really only be for unfunded projects where maybe the, the traffic patterns were different, or weren't, or it wasn't studied in the TSP and wasn't identified as a project, so.
So it only applies to the non-intersection TSP tier-one projects?
The tier-two.
Tier-two or lower?
Yeah. Tier-two.
Okay. Do we have a lower than tier-two?
No, we just have tier-one funded and tier-two unfunded.
Okay. Unfunded.
John, do you have a question?
SDCs don't, at least the way we do them at RVSS, they partly pay for your prorata share of hooking up to what has already been bought by someone, so you end up paying a share of that, and you pay, and part of it reflects future costs. So in a sense, when you do a development, you're enjoying the current access to what someone else built already, the street, and you're kicking in for future development. So it's really both. It's not just the future that you're buying with an SDC. You're also paying your share of what you're getting to take advantage of. That's all.
Okay.
Or I'm wrong. I'm not sure.
Other questions?
Okay. Seeing no further questions, at this point, I will open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on the subject, please come forward as called. Nobody wants to talk about this? We could talk for hours on this, I feel like. All right. Seeing none, I will close the public hearing and take a motion.
Mr. Card?
I move to approve Council Bill 2025-102.
Second?
All right. Motion and second, discussion. All right. Roll call, please.
Nick Card?
Yes.
Jessica Ayers?
Yes.
Kevin Stein?
Yes.
Zach Smith?
Yes.
Garrett West?
Yes.
Mike Kurlinger?
Yes.
Kevin Keating?
Yes.
And John Quinn?
Yes.
We have eight yes?
All right. And that passes. We are on to council business, and I will do no brief interlude, as I have no proclamations tonight.
Great. It is the council officer show tonight, because we got a lot of business to take care of. First things first, council officers meeting. We had four items on the agenda. First item, we had received an email from someone about a soccer presentation to council. So this sort of turned into a larger conversation about the correct role of citizen requests for bringing information to council and the use of the time in study sessions. And so basically, the, the sort of the short version of the conversation is that if we, you know, if any citizen brings stuff to us, obviously, we want people to be engaged, but we do not have time to discuss every issue in a study session. We have lots of formal city business that we need to attend to, and so we don't unfortunately have the pleasure of always being able to bring stuff before the entire council. However, we as individuals can obviously engage, and for stuff that's interesting or important or potentially impactful for the community, we can also engage with staff. And so in this particular instance, John is going to reach out and get more details and, and follow up with the individual relating that soccer presentation. Second item, budget software update. Mr. Martin gave us an update. We will have the contract for their new budget software at the next council meeting. This is for the budget and financial reporting software. Ryan just gave us a few interesting facts and figures. They spend between 1,500 and 1,600 hours. Ryan, is that per year or per biennium? Per biennium, doing budgeting? That is a lot of time that we spend on our budget, but our budget is very pretty, so it's time well spent. Thanks, Ryan. Thanks to other, to a number of savings that they've identified, including things like being able to pass on credit card fees through the software and stuff, the net cost comes out to roughly $20,000 per year for this new software. But not only does that save us a bunch of time, it also gives us some really cool availability to be more transparent with our budget, with our citizens, being able to put that online, giving them the ability to drill into our budget. So those are just exciting notes to come up, and Ryan's going to have a full presentation on that contract for us in two weeks. Looking forward to it. Next item, city manager recruitment. And so rough timeline, we kind of discussed a process for how we wanted to go through this, and the consensus was that next week, we have our study session. One of the items that'll get added to next week's agenda is going to be a presentation from Bonnie to go over some process details on the, how do it, pros and cons, that sort of things. We can kind of discuss through the process. And then we need to, as a council, we need to sit down and have a clear head about what it is we're actually looking for in a city manager. Given the fullness of our agenda, the ideal time for us to be able to set aside an entire study session to really engage and dive into this conversation is the Fourth Wednesday in January. So after discussion and officers, we are currently scheduling the sort of city manager requirements, desires, wish list, whatever you want to call it, for the Fourth Wednesday in December. So that was going to be a really, hopefully engaging meeting. Hopefully, everyone can make it. What?
I'm sorry, did you say January or December?
Fourth, Fourth Wednesday in January.
Four, December.
I don't, did I say December? Well, it's currently December. Let's call February, we can do Mar, no. Fourth Wednesday in January. And so then we'll be able to dive into that discussion. Fourth item, SO Ready liaison appointment. Currently, Rob Field, former city manager, is our liaison to SO Ready. We need to appoint a new liaison. I move to appoint the interim city manager, John Viall, as our SO Ready liaison. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Thank you. Mr. Stein? Any discussion? All those in favor of John, signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed? Congratulations, John. I know you're looking forward to it. That concludes our council officers. Let's see here. Oh, committee reports. Does anyone have any committee or commission reports for us? Thanksgiving was great, I ate a lot of turkey. Mike, do you have anything?
I was going to say it was Thanksgiving.
Okay. All right. I know we were all so busy with our families. Great, that was easy. Next item, boards and commission appointments. So we have a number of board and commission appointments. I'd like to start with a few that are pretty straightforward. We received, basically, we have openings, and we received the exact number of candidates as we have openings, and these are opening, these are people who either currently serve or were recommended by the interviewing group. So I'm going to go ahead and go through all of these as a single motion, but just so if you want to take a look and look through these. That is the policy, sorry, the police advisory committee, unified appeals board. Okay, I'll do that one separate. Unified appeals board, cemetery commission, and tree committee. Anyone have any concerns about the three of those, or do you need a second to take a look? All right. I move to approve Marcy Pierce to the licensed architect position on the unified appeals board with a term beginning February 1, 2026, and expiring January 31, 2028, to reappoint Megan Eklund to the cemetery commission with a term beginning February 1, 2026, and expiring January 31, 2029, and to reappoint Carl Gaidens?
Gaidons.
Gaidens to the tree committee with a term beginning February 1, 2026, and expiring January 31, 2029. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor of the, of the appointment, signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed? Great, congratulations. Mike requested, police advisory committee, do you have something separate, or?
I don't get to vote on it.
Oh, okay. Yeah, that's right, we don't want the mayor telling us, we should advise the police. All righty. I move to reappoint James Colley as the faith-based representative, Jeanne Jensen to the Ward One representative position, and Mason McKinney to the Ward Three representative position on the police advisory committee with terms beginning February 1, 2026, and expiring January 31, 2029. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Mike?
What's the level of concern about having the fourth position just open? Are we actively looking for somebody for that, or are the police going to be ill-advised?
They, they, they may be insufficiently advised. Justin, are you going to be okay with that for as long as it takes? We're going to get the right person in there, right, chief?
Megan?
Oh, actually, we have an answer to that one. So the other opening is for the 549C position, and they have the person that's identified, they just hadn't filled out an application, we'll take care of them at our next meeting. Any other discussion on the motion? All those in favor of the appointment signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed? Congratulations, that passes. All right, now we have the more complicated ones that we love to do. This one's done.
Just parks, right?
Oh, yeah, it's just parks. Just parks.
If you, if you may.
Mr. Stein?
Hey, always, Parks and Rec Commission interviews are always good, because it seems to be one that people kind of gravitate to, because lots of people engage in our wonderful Parks and Rec facilities and want to have an input. So with that, I move to appoint back Kazra Body, Ryan Lungard, and Jim Bosworth to Parks and Recreation Commission with terms beginning February 1, 2026, and expiring January 31, 2029, and appoint Gary Wheeler to the partial term position with a term beginning immediately and ending January 31, 2028.
A second. Any discussion on the motion?
I just, I just want to say, you know, thanks for those for replying, and also for the, the everlasting service of Gary Wheeler to coming back to the city in a different capacity.
John, you looking forward to this, too? 15 years from now, we're going to be pulling you back on commissions.
Uh-huh. Any other discussion on the motion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Congratulations to the applicants. And with that, that concludes, unless I woefully screwed something up. All right, we're good. That concludes council business.
Thank you very much. Agenda item 110, staff reports. Mr. Viall, do you have any staff reports?
No further staff reports.
Great. Anything else for the good of the order? I will just mention out loud, because we have two members of the public that showed up today with anticipatory excitement in regards to the sidewalks on Stevens Street, former councillor Tim Jackal, he really couldn't stop pushing this project, so here we are. Did you ever hear that before, Mr. Viall?
Very aware of that, Your Honor.
Anyway, so I thought that was great to see, that, to see not only is it coming to fruition, but the public support behind that. So seeing nothing else? Yes, sir.
I had my hand up, you only looked that way. Sorry.
Hmm? Did I?
Yeah. Real quick, so is it me, Mr. Keating, councillor Ayers, who else went? And Garrett, Mr. West, we went to the, the traffic, or the Main Street, you know, project meet and greet. That was pretty fun. I always enjoy like, just hearing, you know, people with their take, and, you know, you spend enough time there and you'll hear every different option. And there's a few things that when we come to council discussion about this that I think is pretty interesting that wasn't on the menu. And that's one of the things that councillor Ayers put out during an interview she did, is maybe we do something that's not quite here. Not in terms of it being like, super different, but in terms of like, maybe massaging some of the things we heard. So there's a couple of things that I heard that'd be kind of interesting when we have a discussion on it sometime in 2026. I don't, I don't even know.
In, in January 2026 will be the final decision. Next week, you'll hear a report regarding the meetings that you've had.
Awesome. Yeah, so, you know, it was, it was a really good turnout. Lots of people filled out comment cards, so I look forward to being able to read those in the near future as well. But thanks for those that have, you know, made their voice heard in whatever way, and it'll be up to the council to decide, you know, how we're going to move forward. Thank you.
All right. Anything else? Left, right, left. Okay. Meeting is adjourned at 7:04.
Yeah, so 7:10?
Near 7:10.
So, just a, just a quick, quick break, because we need to acquire some stuff before we move to the mere meeting. Thanks.
Done. Anyone in the audience wants to come and speak? Also, no consent calendar? No, none of that. No public hearings? Resolutions? Mr. Mitten?
Thank you, Mr. President. Item 70.1 is Resolution 2025-006, continued from November 19th, 2025. A resolution approving and authorizing execution of an option agreement and agreement of purchase and sale between the Medford Urban Renewal Agency and Stewartship Development, LLC concerning the development of affordable senior rental housing at 711 through 81 North Central Avenue, Medford, Oregon. And I rose to call you Mr. President instead of Chair, so sorry.
We'll be fine. All right. Let the minutes reflect now. Mr. Weiss, the floor is yours.
Good evening. Harry Weiss, Urban Renewal Project Specialist. So this is a continuation from our conversation at the last meeting. I did send a reminder particularly to Mr. Kurlinger and Mr. Smith to watch the video because it was riveting, but also there was a lot of very good discussion. So with Mr. Morland's help, we have recrafted and redrafted or amended the option agreement to address the two primary concerns that were identified. One is, we need a final drop dead date on the option, which is now December 31 of 2029, and I'll explain that in a minute. The second was, I believe Mr. Quinn's concerned about, can we have some language in there that gives a schedule of milestones for progress in the ORCA application procedure? And so we have built that in with each phase of the application process. Within six months, X will happen. Within three months of that, and so there's a performance benchmark that's written into the contract. I want to address the December 31st, 2029 option ultimate expiration date. As you will recall, these projects get into a pipeline, and you can have projects that can be sitting on a waiting list that have been approved, but there are not sufficient funds currently available at OHCS to award a funding reservation. So that pipeline is designed that those projects will progress as new appropriations and funding becomes available. They will work their way through the pipeline. We have no expectation that this project will get funded in the current biennium, but in the next biennium, which will begin, you know, July 1 of '27, is, I'm sorry, yes, July 1 of, hang on, I gotta think here for a minute. The next biennium starts July 1 of next year, right?
Twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven, all right. Twenty-seven, yes, thank you. I'm sorry. I'm fighting off a little bit of a cold, so I'm a little bit foggy in the brain. Our hope is that it will be funded in those appropriations. If it is not, it would roll over to the biennium that starts July 1 of '29, and that would be it. If they don't get funded in the next two biennia, the project, the option expires. So that's why it extends out four years from this month. I'll be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Counselor Ayers?
So is there any other stopgaps in there? Say, just all of a sudden, the LIFT program died, you know, or something else happened that would possibly prohibit them from completing the project? My question is, do we have other outs besides the targeted?
Well, the first out is that they don't get through the impact assessment phase of the ORCA, and their project is rejected. And then the option dies. But if they get through the impact assessment, then it's a question of waiting for the appropriations to be made that they can be funded. So short of that, and of course, at that point, that's when they have really come out of pocket, you know, upwards of a million dollars.
Sure.
So they want to preserve that capital expenditure and the opportunity. One other thing that could happen, I don't think it's likely, but in the event that we get to the second biennium that starts in '29, and they don't get a funding reservation right of way before the end of the year, then I've talked with the developer and said, well, you know, you're not paying us anything for the land. You should just go ahead and exercise the option and close. And that way, you've preserved all of your opportunity and, you know, conserved all your opportunity cost that's embodied in the application procedure. What would happen is that as soon as the exercise is completed, we roll over and we're in a DDA, and the DDA will have certain performance metrics that we can then enforce, and there would be a different set of potential breaches for noncompliance or nonperformance. So the option rolls into a DDA with further detail, and there might be other outs in that.
Right, okay, thank you.
And just to tag onto that, with your hypothetical, where the entire ORCA program is shut down, we can always negotiate and agree to an early termination of any option with the other party. If they realize that there's no path forward for them, they'd have no reason to not agree to such.
Yeah, I think it's, I mean, it's obviously interesting, my, you know, like I've said lots of times now, it's just, the funding mechanism is what catches me off guard, not the project, not what they're trying to do. I mean, there's concerns about the location, but you know what? I think Harry made a great point. Lots of people seem to find this to be a good location to put, you know, lots of units on it. So that's what they've determined, people that aren't, not us, that have determined it's a good spot for it. So we'll take note of the word. I think that's a fair question. The state government is going to go through a lot over the next two, four years in terms of cuts. It is definitely going to be a big cut cycle, and while these are great things, they're going to seriously have to weigh all the things that a state does. And those who have been in the nonprofit world know that really good programs do end up by the wayside because you cannot fund everything. So it's very likely, I mean, not very likely, it's, something's going to get cut. Will this be one of them? That's something that they'll have to decide in the coming years. But I'm sure the Stewart Development Group is fully aware of this too, and they're willing to put in a bunch of money in the hopes that, you know, they get put on a list and they get this project done. And so with that, I guess it's fine to move forward. So are we ready? This is not a public hearing. Okay, motion?
I move to approve Resolution 2025-00, oh, is that right? Yeah, 006.
Is there a second? Second by Mr. Keating. Any further discussion? Mayor?
Yeah, as we kind of hammered out the sort of perpetuity of the previous agreement, I think it all makes sense, and it was never anyone's intent, just kind of get that cleaned up again. We have a definite need for senior low-income housing in this area. Again, we don't want to be kind of wrapped down the road forever, but we, you know, this certainly hits a need that we need, a need of our community, and I hope it goes forward.
Mr. Kurlinger?
I also think it's kind of a weird spot for it, but as we've discussed, there's not a line of people clamoring to do something with the land, and people who do this very successfully have said that they think it's a good spot. So I am very hopeful that it turns out to be much less awkward than I felt like the first time I walked it.
Thank you. Any final comments? Saying none, roll call, please.
Jessica Ayers?
Yes.
Kevin Keating?
Yes.
John Quinn?
Yes.
Kevin Stein?
Yes.
Michael Zarazinsky?
Yes.
Mike Kurlinger?
Yes.
Nick Card?
Yes.
Zach Smith?
Yes.
And Garrett West?
Yes.
We have nine yeses.
Thank you. Next up?
Item 70.2 is Resolution 2025-013. A resolution approving and authorizing execution of a grant agreement between the Medford Urban Renewal Agency and Southern Oregon Historical Society, providing $50,000 of capital funding for HVAC retrofit of 106 North Central Avenue.
Is there any discussion? Kind of, kind of, it's been out there for a while, so there's no need for staff report? Is there a motion?
I move to approve the motion as presented.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Oh, Mr. Keating, seconds.
Any discussion? Saying none, please call the roll.
Mike Kurlinger?
Yes.
Kevin Keating?
Yes.
John Quinn?
Yes.
Zach Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Zarazinsky?
Yes.
Kevin Stein?
Yes.
Garrett West?
Yes.
Jessica Ayers?
Yes.
And Nick Card?
Yes.
We have nine yeses.
Any board business? Saying none. All right, Director, staff reports?
I had originally planned to give you two staff reports tonight. I'm asking you all to defer the LaFiesta Market Report until next month. They originally were supposed to have bid opening last Wednesday. I was expecting a fuller financial picture. They extended the bid deadline, so I don't have a full report to give you on that. However, I do want to talk to you about the Element Hotel determination letter we see from the Bureau of Labor and Industry regarding prevailing wage. And this is mainly just informational and to get a little bit into the weeds about how Bowley looks at things. So our disposition and development agreement was structured in a very specific language that caps MIRA's financial participation to preclude the application of prevailing wage rate to the project. And there are two buckets of money that you can use as a public agency to stay under the trigger point for prevailing wage. One is, you can use up to $749, $999 of funds of a public agency. As long as you don't exceed that dollar amount, prevailing wage will not apply. Additionally, there are specific statutory exemptions for certain expenditures paid by the agency directly, and those include building and permit fees, SDCs, that kind of public, direct payment to other public agencies. There are also a couple of other things in the statute that they don't count tax credits or tax abatements, and this project will apply for the tax abatement through SUREDI for a hotel project through the enterprise program at the State of Oregon. It doesn't apply if you pay full market price for the land and a couple of other things that you can do. And they don't make me track my time to say, oh, my time has to be billed to the project. So as of today, this is our projected exempt expenditures, and in our DDA, we said we would spend up to a million dollars on those exempt elements like building permits, SDCs, development plan review fees, all that kind of stuff. And as of today, we're sitting right around $836,000 of that million-dollar allowance that we built into the contract. We'll get some final clarity about that as permits are issued and SDCs are finalized, but that's a pretty good guess of where we're going to land overall on the million-dollar As far as the other funds that count towards the 749, we submitted a letter, well, the hotel submitted a letter to Bowley requesting a determination, and we gave them a tremendous amount of information that they requested about everything that we've done over the course of time and what they would deem to be funds of a public agency. And basically, funds of a public agency is everything that it can possibly identify to claw into the project without any other explanation. So as you know, we demolished the buildings and we moved the utilities, the gas line that ran through the center of the site. They have counted all of that expense towards our 749. This was a bit of a surprise because there is a provision in statute that says, if you sell property for fair market value, and we did the appraisal after all this was done, then there aren't funds of a public agency in the sale. Well, it turns out, that only applies to the price of the land. They still consider everything you spent to prepare that land to get to a fair market value to be expenditures of public funds. And, you know, there's a certain amount of logic that had we not demolished the buildings, they would have had to demolish the buildings, and we would have discounted the property price by, you know, the same amount. So some of that makes sense, but we were a little bit surprised because we're under the impression that some of those expenses might be baked in to the final price. No, 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 that's not how it works. The other things, the non-fee, the fees that were not charged by the city, for example, for the vacation, we paid an application fee to the city to Vacate Apple in Third Street. But our land use consultant, our survey work, all of those expenses were captured as expenditures of public funds. They asked for the settlement statement, and they said, oh, you paid the title insurance premium. That makes sense, that's for the benefit of the developer. Which, the two things that really stood out to me that I am still baffled by is our closing costs, because we split the escrow fee, right? And our portion of the property taxes that were owed on the property, because a portion of this property was accessible, some of it was not, because we rented it to Lithia for parking, we owed property taxes on it. But we only paid property taxes for the period that we owned it based on the prior use. Well, that's included too. So just, thank you. That is exactly the response I was looking for. Like, what? But be that as it may, it is, it is a good heads up going forward as the MIRA Board to understand that the amount of funds that you can actually spend on a project are really quite constrained, and there's a lot of very detailed accounting that we have to track to make sure that we don't hit 750 by accident and we stay below the threshold. Because if it popped over the threshold, it'd probably be a $6 to $7 million surcharge. And we don't want that for anybody. So that's our little foray tonight into prevailing wage. Any questions?
Are you able to appeal any of this? Because I would just say, you know, the whole point, one of the big points of MIRA is taking a dilapidated area, scraping it, and then trying to find someone else to do it. So let's say we did it, and it took three years for someone to do it, or they'll be like, oh, well, three years ago, you spent $200,000 making it prepared to sell it, and now we're going to, you know, latch that on to, you know, the amount of money that they can receive from a public agency. It seems pretty ridiculous.
So we did explore the options for appeal, and Bowley was very helpful in that. They sent like a half a dozen other letters of determination that they've used on other projects. Most importantly, they sent the record of a fully adjudicated appeal that addressed all of the things that we would have argued, and these have already been through hearings, and they've determined that, yes, you do have to pay those property taxes, or yes, you do have to pay these things. So at that point, it becomes an exercise, perhaps a futility, unless you're willing to challenge it all the way through the courts, to take it beyond the administrative hearing level to get a judicial decision about whether or not that those decisions were proper or not. And that would be tens of thousands of dollars in many years that's not left on my clock.
It would probably charge us for our attorney fees, too.
Yes.
That's a, sorry, so what court was that?
This is the administrative hearing process at Bowley.
So someone within Bowley gets to determine whether the Bowley stuff is...
I guess it's a hearings officer. I'm not quite sure of the...
Yeah, Mr. Mitten?
So if it's anything like the appeals of wastewater treatment plant permits, it starts with an ALJ through a hearing process, and it goes from then to the Court of Appeals, and approximately two to three years later, you might get a decision.
Okay. Real quick question before I, is that seven, how long has that 750 been the number in Oregon?
As long as I've been here. I wanted to go back and look at the last time it was amended, but it's not indexed for inflation, and it's, at this point, given the cost of development, it's a pretty de minimis amount.
Seventy is nothing.
Right.
Okay, sorry.
I will say that part of this is to think about as counsel in terms of any future legislative lobbying that you all might want to do or get involved with OR 7 or some of the other special districts about looking for some amendment of the prevailing wage rate statute.
Good. I have many thoughts about this list in front of us, but how did Element respond to this decision? They're probably in a similar boat as us, but are they going, well, okay, that sucks, but we can still get $373,000? Or are they saying, we thought we were getting 750, and this puts us in a really bad spot, and we're very frustrated with MIRA?
Oh, they're not frustrated with us. We knew this going in. That's why we structured the DDA very specifically to say, you know, we'll give you up to 749, depending on whatever Bowley determines to be funds of a public agency. So we knew this all going in. And don't get me wrong, we put the money into the project, so, you know, that's fair enough. You know, the hope was that they would count the sale price as a baked-in cost and that we could do a 750 on top of that, but that's not how it played out. I will mention one other nuance about the funds. You know, when we did this with Lazaiyla with the Genesis, there was a final amount of about $340,000 that we just distributed as a grant, an economic incentive grant. That's probably not the most efficient way to do it because he gets 1099, and it's taxable income at the end of the year. So it's probably better to go ahead and spin the money down on expenditures that we pay for rather than do a cash grant. For nonprofits, it's a non-taxable grant, but for a development, private development, would be taxable. So probably more information than you really wanted to know.
Okay. Anyone else have any questions, comments about this? All right. Oh, Mr. Mitten?
I just want to briefly recognize that Harry's structure of 749, 99 minus whatever is determined to be funds of a public agency made a huge difference here, and I was incredibly thankful when we talked it over and I realized what he did.
Awesome. All right. Is there...
That's it for me.
Any propositions or remarks from board members? Not seeing any. Adjournment. We are adjourned at 7:34.